Thank you in advance for joining us on this call. This evening, you'll hear Dr. Watson talk about our Safety First Plan for the 2021 school year. As you know, COVID-19 conditions in the Houston area have been evolving over the last several weeks, and state and local officials have been adapting and responding to these changes. In the first part of this meeting, Dr. Watson will talk with you about how the district is closely monitoring these conditions here in our area, and how Spring ISD has developed an operational decision meter to guide how and when we reopen our campuses. He'll also detail what our Empowered Learning at Home Remote Program will look like this school year. We have some great improvements planned for our remote learning track, and Dr. Watson will walk you through them in his presentation. He will also share with you all the safety protocols being put in place for when we can welcome students back on our campuses for in-person instruction. Once Dr. Watson finishes his presentation, I'll come back to moderate questions that have been submitted via the Q and A and chat functions of this meeting. We also have team members responding to questions live in the chat. Working together, it's our hope that we'll be able to address everyone's question. If we run out of time, though, we will update our parent FAQs on the district website with any questions we were not able to answer. Thank you again for being here this evening. I'm now going to turn the floor over to our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Rodney Watson.
Thank you, Chief Don Oatfield. My name is Rodney Watson. It's truly a pleasure for me to be here with you all, sharing you all the updates that we have made to our, our plan for the fall. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with you so we can look at the presentation. Before we get started, I want to say a very special thank you to our Board of Trustees, for without your leadership, none of this would be able to be possible. In addition to that, I'd like to say a very special thank you to all of the individuals that sent me emails, that sent me elevates, and sent me phone calls, where I was able to talk with you about our plan. Your feedback has been truly fundamental and essential for this program that we're having tonight, our town hall. Respond, Reimagine, and Reopen. This is the title of our plan. So hopefully tonight, as I go through the presentation, you will see how we responded to your specific feedback that you've provided through various forms of social media, as well as our Elevate and emails. But then we also hope that you take a few moments to reimagine how we're going to provide the best possible education for your children through the two models that we have. And last but not least, reopen. We will be reopening our schools, and we understand that the best possible place for students to be engaged with their teachers is in school. And so you will see a variety of options as we go through this to ensure not only that our students will be engaged in high-quality learning, but will do so in a safe manner. As we think about all of the planning that has gone into the development of our 2020-2021 Plan, it's extremely important to understand the core guiding beliefs that went into play as we developed our plan. Student learning must be the cornerstone for all of our decisions. And as I said earlier, the best possible place to do that is in a classroom. However, based upon our current decisions, our current needs within our community, we are looking at different options. In addition to that, the learning needs of each student must be met. The health and safety of our students and staff is a priority. Our school community is responsible for making the lives of those living in it better. But in addition to that, it is our community's collective responsibility to invest in the health, success, and vitality of its members. In summation, we understand that our schools are only as good as our community, and our community is only as good as our schools. And working together with our plan, we hope to provide the best possible solutions for all of our students, thus improving our community. I remember back in February, I had the opportunity to speak to our community regarding our state of the district. And during that presentation, I shared with our community that our Spring Independent School District is and will be a district of choice known for high-quality academics with innovative and specialized programs that meet the needs of all students in a positive learning environment. And there's no better time than the present to state that our vision still remains clear as a district in Spring ISD. It's important that we understand that many of us come to the table with so many different thoughts and feelings regarding our own personal beliefs and feelings regarding the pandemic. But in doing so, rest assured that we will provide high-quality academics with innovative and specialized programs that meet the needs of all of our students in a positive learning environment. Prior to jumping into the content, I really wanted to take a few moments to set the context by which the decisions were made, which guide our plan development. As I'm sure many of you have seen, in Harris County, the number of confirmed cases as well as active cases continues to increase. As of Friday, data from Harris County, there was over 50,000 confirmed cases. And if you've looked at the total today, you can determine and see that they have increased. But as we look specific to our community, as we make decisions for Spring ISD students, you can see the attendance area that I've, on the left-hand side, in terms of the ZIP codes. And you can see the corresponding ZIP codes for each of those school areas and the number of positive cases within each. So for example, for the ZIP code 77073, which Booker, Cooper, Decaney, Early College, Ritchie Academy, and Transportation reside in, you can see there is a number of 467 positive cases as reported by Harris County last week. But not just looking at our ZIP code in which our community and our students reside in, we also look at our communities where our Spring ISD reside in as well. So of the top 10 ZIP codes from Spring ISD employees, you can see here the number of active cases by the number of employees that we have residing in those specific ZIP codes. So when looking at the 77373, out of all of our Spring ISD employees, we have 825 employees that reside in that district, excuse me, in that ZIP code in Spring, Texas. And out of that number, there are 453 confirmed cases within that ZIP code. And you can see all of the other ZIP codes on the left-hand side, the places in Texas where the staff reside, by the number of positive cases on the far right-hand side. So as we began to develop our 2020-2021 school planning, we began doing so after we fulfilled the promises that we made to you all this spring, especially regarding our seniors' end-of-the-year experiences for virtual graduation, as well as our face-to-face graduation. And we're very proud that we were able to provide both opportunities for our students. But during that process, we began planning for the 2020-21 school year with Central Office Administration. We placed an order for 11,000 Chromebooks on May 13th, which really upped the number of Chromebooks that we were able to provide our students based upon the number of Chromebooks that we provided prior to the end of school. In addition to that, on May 29th, we passed our Intercessional Calendar, which was developed and approved by our Board of Trustees. In June, we began our scenario-based planning with more than 100 district personnel actively involved in the process. Once again, I want to say a very special thank you to our teachers, our campus administrators, and our central office personnel who were involved in that process. On June 30th, we presented that plan to the board and shared with you our community, our plans for the 2020-21 year school year. In addition to that, in July, as we developed our plan and shared that with the board, on July 7th, TEA released new guidelines regarding, requiring daily on-campus learning. As we pivoted from our July 7th recommendation from TEA, TEA communicated on July 17th that districts will be able to open with remote learning where COVID-19 cases are. So our time together tonight will be categorized in four specific areas. Our Student Learning: Reimagine, Safety First Practices, Family Supports, and Next Steps. Let's start with Student Learning: Reimagine. Prior to jumping into this slide, I do want you to understand that we heard your feedback regarding the in-person, or more importantly, the remote learning that we were able to provide you all this spring semester. And we incorporated your feedback into this presentation. So for the options for 2020-2021, our students will have two options. Safety First: In Person, and Option Two: Empowered Learning at Home. Now, it's important to understand that both options include the ability to participate in co-curricular activities, a full suite of district and student and family supports, synchronous and asynchronous learning, and standards-based curriculum with PBL experiences. As we look at synchronous and asynchronous learning, it's important to understand that based upon the guidance from TEA, funding for school districts for Spring ISD will only happen based on the average daily attendance. So the offering of synchronous and asynchronous learning is paramount to our district being funded from the TEA. As we look at the definitions for synchronous, it includes two-way, real-time, live instruction between teachers and students through the computer. Now again, this is different than the type of instruction that primarily relied upon parents and teachers checking in with students that was offered this spring. In synchronous instruction, it will be two-way, real-time, live instruction that will be facilitated by teachers for students through the use of computer. Associated activities include teacher-directed, subject-specific instruction via Schoology, and our content management system are using Google Meets. A-synchronous, the definition for asynchronous is students engaged in the learning materials on their own time, interacting intermittently with the teacher via the computer. Again, asynchronous learning is students are engaged in the learning materials on their own time, interacting intermittently with the teacher via the computer. Now, this will be primarily done for independent work, and students will be able to use Success Maker, Edge Annuity, and Project-Based Learning. Remember, there is a difference between the synchronous instruction and the asynchronous instruction, and you will see examples of each as we go through the presentation. Once again, based upon your feedback regarding instruction in the spring, across both in-person and remote learning environments, student learning will be teacher-directed, subject-specific instruction driven by school schedules. What's different within this model as compared to the spring is students were given interdisciplinary units through the use of PBLs. We will not be implementing that process. Rather, we will be implementing a process where student learning will be teacher-directed, subject-specific, using teachers-driven-by-school schedules. We will use Schoology as a tool to unify and connect in-person and virtual learning. Our courses will follow the district's standard-based curriculum and include assessments to ensure progress. It's extremely important for us not only to be able to provide the instruction, but, but to be able to assess our students to ensure they are mastering the content specific to their area. We will engage with two project-based learning units per year for, to deepen the learning environment or the, or the learning and understanding for our students. Now, that is really different from what we did this spring. Students will participate in two project-based learning units per year, one in the fall and one in the spring. We've also heard from our parents regarding student supports. Across both in-person and remote learning, students receiving special services will be provided an individualized learning plan that includes the followings, if needed. Students will receive an appropriate device, internet access, and not only will we be focusing on the instruction, but also the social and emotional learning needs of our students through trauma-informed care. We will also provide small group supports for our students, language supports, and accommodation tools as appropriate and outline in their individualized IEP plan. There are several things that will be happening to ensure your child is ready on the first day. Our goal is to get learning tools to students who need them. So, students who currently have a device assigned to them will keep them. These will be students who checked out a device in the spring semester who still have them, who use them over the summer, they will keep those devices. Students who need a device will pick them up in a process similar to how we distributed the computers this spring. That process will take place in August and be tiered by grade and need. It's important to understand that if you own a device, please use that so we can ensure that we have enough technology for everyone. Hotspots on an as-needed basis will be loaned out to families based upon the amount that we have. Many families have asked, "How will we structure our day, and how will that look different than it did in the spring?" So whether it's in-person or remote, students will have schedules to organize their day and follow, and allow for seamless transition between learning options if needed. And that will take place for our Safety First and our Empowered at Home. So let's start off with our Empowered at Home learning model. Currently, if you look at our website, we are currently red, which means for the first four weeks of school, we will remain, all students will be empowered, will remain in Empowered at Home learning. As we look at our elementary remote learning schedule, this is a sample of how the schedule could look at your child's school. We will start off with 90 minutes of teacher-directed, subject-specific instruction, followed by 45 minutes of small-group instruction or tutorials as assigned by the teacher. Students will have a 30-minute lunch break or a brain break, followed by 45 minutes of small-group instruction and more tutorials as needed and assigned by their teacher. At the very end of the day, we will have 40 minutes of office hours for students and parents to touch base with their, their teacher, to ask any clarifying questions and to get any extra support that they're needing. On the right-hand side, you can see a sample schedule of the day from 8:35 all the way till 3:40 PM. As we transition to our middle-school remote learning schedule, you can see 100 minutes of teacher-directed, subject-specific instruction, followed by a 15-minute break, then 45 minutes of small-group instruction and tutorials as assigned by the teacher, 45 minutes of small-group instruction and tutorials, once again, assigned by the teacher, and at the conclusion of the day, 45 minutes of office hours for students and parents that are needing extra support or to get any needed questions answered. Once again, you can see a sample schedule, starting at 9:40 in the morning and concluding at 4:45. Once again, it's important to understand that these are sample schedules. The actual sample, the actual schedule will be developed by the actual building that your child attends, and they will get that information out to you. But all of the schedules will follow the time increments that's reported here. The only schedule that's slightly different from in-person versus remote is our high-school schedule. All high-school students, regardless of remote or in-person, will have 120 minutes of teacher-directed, subject-specific information, followed by 15 minutes of a brain break, 45 minutes of self-study or small-group instruction, that 30-minute lunch, another 120 minutes of teacher-directed, subject-specific instruction, 45 minutes of self-study and small-group instruction, then once again, that 45 minutes of office hours for students and parents to touch base with their teacher. The main difference in this schedule is, in the in-person, school will start at 7:35, but in the high-school remote learning pathway, classes start at 8:30. And so you can see the 8:30 to 9 o'clock class preparation and independent study time all the way through the end of the day at 4:15 where the office hours are. Let's talk about our Safety First: In-Person Model. We understand and agree, the best possible place for the optimal learning is with our teachers in school. So those families that choose Safety First: In-Person, it's important to understand our Operational Decision Meter. This is our opportunity to be transparent with you and to allow you to see how decisions will be made as we transition throughout the school year. It's also important to understand that our Operational Decision Meter follows the Harris County Threat Assessment in terms of the colors that's indicated here. Please understand that as we operate throughout the school year, our colors will follow the Harris County Threat Assessment, but we also reserve the right to change the color based on our specific needs in Spring ISD using the data that we showed you earlier based upon the ZIP codes that reside of our schools and our office buildings here within the district. As we look at the first color, red, we are currently in red. Red signifies that a majority of students will participate in remote learning until the COVID-19 contagion level improves. Some small-group in-person instruction may be provided as needed and/or required. If you remember earlier, I spoke to you about the guidance that changed from the TEA. And so we want to make sure that we leave opportunity for us to identify some of our most high-need students, giving us an opportunity to meet their needs by bringing them in. Orange signifies a significant level of COVID-19 in our community. All Safety First: In-Person students will attend school on an alternating day schedule. So you'll see how we transition from the majority of students will participate in remote learning at home in the red to the orange, where all Safety First: In-Person students will attend school on an alternating day schedule, with remote learning for all on Wednesdays, so campuses can be deep cleaned. Daily, small-group in-person secondary instruction may be provided as appropriate, needed, or required. In the orange, our campuses will be divided up, starting with last names with A through K would be assigned to Group A. And students with the last name starting with L through Z would be assigned to Group B. Students in the same family will be able to attend school on the same schedule, even if their last names differ. So below, you will see the sample schedule in the orange level. On Monday, pre-K through 12, on an A day, all students with the last names A through K will be on campus. On Tuesdays, pre-K through 12, all students with L through Z last names will come to school on the B day. Once again, on Wednesdays, all students will participate in remote learning to allow the cleaning of all of our buildings. On Thursday, pre-K through 12 will be an A day. And on Friday, pre-K through 12 will be a B day for students with last names starting with L through Z. It's important to understand the rolling AB schedule for grades pre-K through 12 would continue as long as public health conditions warrant it. Our hope is that we would eventually be able to move into the yellow and green, which is a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday schedule for all students with social distancing and other health and safety measures in place. It's also important to note that one of the main reasons why we have an A day and B day is to ensure that we have approximately 50% of our students on an A day and 50% of students that choose for in-person instruction on the B day. We do reserve the right to make adjustments to that, to that schedule to ensure that we have not too many students on any given A day or B day, remember, for those families who choose for in-person instruction. Once the levels improve, we will move to yellow. Yellow signifies that all Safety First: In-Person students will attend school daily, but with strict social distancing protocols in place. And once we move to green, all Safety First: In-Person students will attend school daily, but with continued social distancing protocols in place as needed. Let's talk a little bit about the Safety First Practices that will be used for our in-person instruction. You might have noted that the bell schedules have changed for the 2020-21 school year. New bell schedules are staggered by at least one hour between school levels, which allow buses to be cleaned and disinfected between routes, and also enable staggered drop-offs in the morning. So our elementary schedule will start at 8:35 AM to 3:40 PM. Our middle-school schedule from 9:40 AM to 4:45 PM. And our high-school schedule will start at 7:35 for in-person instruction and will end at 2:40 PM. Once again, remember, the times for high-school differ for remote, empowered learning at home as compared to in-person. As we look at health and safety protocols, it's important to understand that before arriving on campus, parents and students will be asked to complete a self-screening for COVID-19 symptoms. In addition, on campus, additional questioning may take place, as well as temperature checks. Masks will be required for all students in all grades, on buses, and on campus. All mask and face covering shall be free of any images, words, political slogans, with the exception of a Spring ISD or school or district logo. We will be practicing physical distancing for everyone. We will be supporting and enforcing frequent handwashing, which will be required on schedule for students. And we're encouraging all students that if they're ill, parents, please keep them at home. And once again, we will be working with our students to educate them on the importance of not touching their face. Student illnesses. Students who exhibit symptoms of COVID-19 will be kept in a separate area of the school until parents are able to pick them up. Students who test positive or exhibit symptoms of COVID-19 cannot return to campus until the following conditions are met. At least three days or 72 hours have passed since recovery or resolution of the fever without the use of any fever-reducing medications. And the child has improvement in respiratory symptoms, i.e. the cough or shortness of breath, and at least 10 days have passed since symptoms' first appearance. As we look at the cleaning and sanitizing protocols for our buildings, each classroom and restroom will be sanitized daily. The cleaning cloths will be changed for each classroom in common areas to maximize cleanliness. Custodians will wear masks and gloves during work hours. In addition, all high-touch areas will be sanitized daily, and the cafeteria, when used, will be disinfected between lunch periods. Finally, staff will have access to disinfectant wipes to sanitize working surfaces and shared objects after each use and during breaks of instruction. As we look at our classrooms, seating desks will be physically distanced when feasible, turning desks to face the same direction rather than facing each other like we normally do to work in small-group instruction. Plexiglass dividers may be used in areas where physical distancing is not feasible. This is where some of our classrooms are too small for the social distancing, so plexiglass dividers will be used in areas where we're unable to provide that distance. Student school supplies will be kept separate, and there will be no community sharing of supplies. Now we will transition into family supports. As we look at transportation, disinfecting high-touch surfaces will be done between routes. At the end of the morning and end of the afternoon, we will disinfect every bus using our electrostatic guns. In addition, sinus-requiring masks will be used as developmentally appropriate. Buses will have extra masks for students should they need them once they arrive on the bus. In addition, we will have hand sanitizer available on every bus. Drivers will wear masks, and buses will run AC and will lower windows as weather permits to increase the flow of ventilation on the bus. Buses will not refuse transportation in the mornings. Students will not be left at any stops. If a student appears symptomatic, the student will be isolated on the bus, and then they will report to the office, and we will follow our protocols. Child nutrition. Students will be provided with healthy meals, Monday through Friday, regardless of the student's instructional setting or days on the campus. As needed, meal services will be adapted to classroom delivery or grab-and-go in support of social distancing requirements. Additional family supports. Families will be fully supported through digital and non-digital modes. Once again, we heard your feedback of your desire to have additional support from the school district, and we will provide you that additional support, so you will be fully supported through digital or non-digital modes. The district's help desk will be enhanced and available in multiple languages to ensure we are meeting the needs of our community. Not only will technical support be provided, but academic and socially-emotional supports will be provided for all of our students and families as well. Parents wanting low-tech support will be provided those opportunities and resources as well. Let's talk a little bit about next steps. Parents, we strongly urge you to go to our website at www.springisd.org/reopen. On our website, you will see detailed information regarding our plans for the 2020-21 school year. You will be able to also see our current status as it relates to our Operational Decision Meter. In addition, there are some back-to-school commitment things that we need from you as well. You should have received a unique survey link via email for every student you have enrolled within Spring ISD. We're asking you to please pick the best learning option that best suits your student and family needs as of now. If you change your mind, there will be an opportunity to switch into the Safety First: In-Person option at the end of any grading period. Students can always move from Safety First: In-Person to the Empowered Learning Model at any time. Once again, it's extremely important to understand that if you choose the Safety First: In-Person model, you might, you will be able to change that model, but students can always move from Safety First: In-Person into Empowered Learning at any time. So there are a few next steps and to-dos. All parents should fill out the Back-to-School Commitment Form emailed on July 17th. All parents should fill out the back-to-school commitment form emailed on July 17. All parents should complete online enrollment for their returning students when it opens on July 27. And please make sure your email and cellphone information is updated in the Home Access Center. So if you haven't received any of the survey information or your commitment form, please log into your Home Access Center where you will be able to go in and update your information and get that into us, and then you will be emailed those surveys. At this time, I'll turn it back over to Tiffany Dunn O'Field.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. And I just wanna, I wanna, I'm gonna pass off a couple of questions that were reoccurring questions in our parent Q and A. I appreciate all of the team members that have been on the line. We have answered almost, I would say, close to seventy-five, eighty percent of the questions that have been coming in, but there have been some questions that have been asked by several parents. So I definitely want to take this opportunity to address some of those questions. First off, for any parent, we have the two options that have been sent to you in a survey link. If you have not received the unique survey per student, you can email survey@springisd.org and let them know you need to provide your student's name, grade level, and date of birth, and they will make sure that a survey gets out to you. If you did not receive a survey, it means that your email is not up to date in our student information system, and we need to get that updated as well as we head into registration for the school year at the end of this month too as well. But as Dr. Watson mentioned, there are two options for our families. I know that for some families, we've had a lot of questions, and I do want to address this and be very clear on it. We did talk about if you're really sure that you want your child in our remote learning option, our empowered learning at home option throughout the year. We know based on our parent survey that we sent out about a month ago that some families just know they're gonna wanna be remote learning for the entire year. We're asking you to choose that option for your child. What we're trying to do is to get some really good counts on the students that families know that they wanna be in remote learning, and then our families that know, I really want my child in person when that is available by the district. So with that, and to Dr. Watson, if you are in our safety-first in-person at any time that you want your child to move to our empowered learning at home, they can definitely do that. That's just a conversation that you have with your with your school, and they can definitely move at any time from the safety in-person. If we do go back into the classrooms, they can definitely move back to remote learning at any time that you want. And we are going to try to make every accommodation for students who choose the empowered learning at home remote option to move into the safety-first in-person at a grade period changes. So we're definitely going to try to help parents move back and forth, but what we're really trying to get is a good count of those families who want their family, want their students in the remote learning option, and think that they want them in there for the entire year. And so that's a little bit of why the options were worded the way they were. But if you haven't received that survey, it's very important that you email survey@springisd.org to receive your survey. So with that as a first question, we do have a lot of questions coming in, and I wanna take this opportunity to introduce our chief academics officer. We have a lot of questions coming in that are asking about will remote learning look different in the fall than it did in the spring? And I know that our academics department, in collaboration with school leaders, we've had a large planning group working on this. And our remote learning, they definitely listened to the feedback that came in on our parent survey, and they have a wonderful plan prepared for our remote learning for our students. All students will enter the the school year on remote learning. It's a wonderful plan. It's very structured. And I'm gonna pass the floor over to Ms. Kichara Bradford to really kind of give you a feel for what the remote learning plan will look like this fall.
Well, good evening, parents, and thank you so much for your engagement. My little fingers are typing as fast as I can. Lots of great questions. So there are a lot of differences from what we did in the spring, really working very quickly to get lessons up and running for your families, and we appreciate all of your feedback. Moving into the fall, we are going back to our structured, standards-based curriculum where teachers follow their scope and sequence, which is aligned to their grade level and content, what we call TEACs or those subject area standards. So if I'm in fourth grade math, fourth grade, I'll have fourth grade math lessons. I'll have fourth grade reading lessons. I'll have fourth grade writing lessons. And teachers will be meeting with their students every single day following a very set schedule. So they might meet with your child from nine to eleven, and then have a break and then meet with them again in the afternoon. It's gonna be specific to their subjects and to their classes and to their grade levels. We do use online tools such as Google Meet, which is a link that students will be able to click into. They'll be able to see and interact with their teacher and their class, similar to what we're doing right now, planning and lots of interaction, conversation, and collaboration for a whole group as well as small group structures so that students can learn that initial instruction, maybe with their whole class, and then break out into some small groups where teachers can really target and differentiate for the learning needs of each individual child in the classroom, as well as having time throughout their day for intervention or enrichment and advancement as well for those students. So it's going to be somewhat of a more traditional schedule, more traditional content and instruction and lessons. However, delivering it in that remote blended virtual environment, of course, for the first four weeks for all students. But definitely, your child will have their needs met by the teachers. And so algebra teachers will be teaching algebra, and they will have a set time, and they'll be working with your students. So it's much more based on the class that your student is in, the grade level, and the content area. So we're very excited about that. Teachers are working on their lessons. We're working on the curriculum. And then, again, building in that time for small group instruction, also having some office hours, so if students have individual questions or if students need some more individualized supports, those will be available as well.
Thank you, Ms. Bradford. Could you also address a little bit is the supports that we're gonna be providing our special education students? We have a lot of parents asking questions to make sure that we're addressing our special education students as we start the year remote. And then if we're able to go back into in-person instruction, can you really talk with our special education parents that are on the line?
Yes, definitely. So first of all, we know that we have a broad spectrum of students who are receiving special education services, and it's definitely not a one-size-fits-all approach. So we will, of course, be following your child's IEP, their individual education plan, and we'll also be scheduling some beginning-of-the-year ARD meetings so that we can really talk to you and hear some of your concerns, what went well, what supports are in place that are working, and what supports maybe need to be in place for your child to be successful. We always want to ensure that our students are in the least restrictive environment, that they have the opportunity to collaborate with their grade-level peers, and so that's always at the forefront of our plan. So some supports are just, you know, all of those ARDed services. We want to be able to ensure that we are able to provide those to your students. So if they are in need of speech therapy, that they're receiving their speech therapy at the regular schedule. If they are receiving physical therapy, that they are receiving their physical therapy services. So to the maximum extent possible, those will be available both remotely and as well as in-person. And then just hearing from you all, talking to you all, having your ARD meetings and thinking of that individual plan for your students. So if your child is in inclusion, they will be in that general ed classroom. They'll be meeting with the general ed teacher. They'll also have the support of an inclusion teacher or an inclusion paraprofessional to provide them, and they may work with them in a small group. They may sometimes work with them in a group of just two or three other students to really talk them through and help them understand the content. I also know that we have a lot of families who benefit from our case program, and some students really thrived, and parents were there, and students were there. And some students, you know, really just hearing from the services that were provided for our case students may need to select that option for in-person, you know, learning at school. And so that is available to every family when you receive that survey. You know, you can, you know, click on if your child will learn better at school or if you think that for multitude of reasons that your child will learn better at home for this upcoming school year. And then just considering other services that we have available to us that, you know, we can really expand on your child's learning needs. We're looking very carefully at the classroom, making sure that we are doing the social distancing, making sure that everything, you know, that we're practicing all of those great healthy habits to keep our children safe. That's, of course, our, one of our number-one priorities. We want all students to learn, and we want all students to be safe. So definitely talking to you, parents, and also just feedback from the spring so that we are creating those individualized education plans. Your child will have a case manager, and in the next few weeks, you'll be hearing from us specifically just to talk you through your choice, what your option, you know, which one you selected as a family, and how we can really ensure that we are maximizing your child's learning experience. So definitely for students receiving special education services, you will be hearing from us, both at the district and the campus level, your case managers, those teachers that are assigned to your students to really make sure all their ARDed services are provided so that we can both make sure you understand all of your options, what's available, and then develop that plan, that individual plan for your child.
Thank you, Ms. Bradford. We are having several questions come in, and Dr. Watson, we're gonna put you back on the spot here. But we are having several questions come in about the recent announcement from Judge Hidalgo today, Harris County Judge Hidalgo today, talking about her recommendations for schools. And I know in some ways, our operational decision meter already kind of prepares us to be aligned with COVID-19 conditions, and we announced that on June 30th. But I wanted to, I know that some parents with that recent announcement, I think they'd like to hear from you and your thoughts on that.
Absolutely. And I think one of the things that's important to understand that when we started planning for our current models, we took that into consideration. And so as we look at the Harris County Threat Assessment Model, our model does follow along with that as well. So as long as that we are in the red, either by order or recommendation or what's actually happening within our school community, we will stay in the red. But once again, it's important to understand that based upon the level of contagion within any specific ZIP code for any of our buildings or schools, we will reserve the right to be able to move to any level based upon the needs of our specific community. And so we do appreciate the information that was shared with us today from Judge Hidalgo's office based upon her recommendation. And we will be starting our first four weeks of school in remote. And then as we continue to get recommendations, we will make that known to our families on our website and through call-outs or other social media platforms.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. I think you touched on it a little bit. We are have a few questions about our calendar. So the plan is to start school on August 17th, correct? I think I just say that, and I think that's important for our families. Thank you.
Yeah, so we will start school on August 17th, remote for the first four weeks. But it's also to understand, I've had several questions and calls from parents regarding our calendar. Based upon the level of contagion within any ZIP code or within our areas, it's important to understand that it may be better to close school versus moving students from in-person to remote. And so our calendar provides that flexibility and opportunities for us should we have to close school because of the level of contagion or teachers not able to be here or the number of students that are affected as well. It provides us that flexibility to be able to respond to those unique needs without adding additional days on to the remainder of the school year.
Thank you. Thank you. We also have a few questions that are coming in that have been asking about how the lunch. So when we are open and in-person, I know that we have our Director of Child Nutrition on the line too, but families asking a little bit more specifics related to how will lunch work particularly on a secondary campus when we do have students either in the orange or the yellow or the green back on campus? Specifically, I think some of the questions are related to the orange. And what will lunch look like on campuses? I know that we have Shelley Copeland, our Director of Child Nutrition, on the line. Would you mind taking that question, Shelley?
Sure, Tiffany, I will. Thank you. And parents, thank you for joining us this evening. I'm learning a lot by reading answers to questions. But for lunch, what we're doing is working with each campus, and each campus is going to have their own lunch schedule. And this will mean there could be children eating socially-distanced in the cafeteria, and there could be children with meals delivered to their classroom. And we could also have children coming through the lines in the cafeteria socially-distanced and picking up their food and taking it to the classroom. We're going to have grab-and-go meals. It will be a hot lunch every day, but it will be packaged in a manner that it can be taken down the hallway or delivered to the classroom. Thank you.
And we do have a couple more questions coming in to clarify. So just to go back, we do have some questions that are coming to clarify on that we will start remote for the first four weeks. And so, Dr. Watson, I am gonna pivot back to you. I think I heard you say that, you know, we are starting the definitely the year remote. We've been communicating that with our families. We're watching COVID-19 conditions very closely with the most recent announcement by Judge Hidalgo. We'll continue to watch those, but definitely four weeks remote, and then we'll be assessing the situation and communicating with our families. Can you clarify that just a little? We had a few more questions come in.
Absolutely. So I think it's important to understand that the information that Judge Hidalgo put out was a recommendation and not an order. The TEA guidance provides us specific information regarding what needs to happen in terms of the four weeks or the additional four weeks. And so we are allowed to start remote for the first four weeks per TEA guidance. If we need to go longer without an order from Judge Hidalgo's office, we must go and have a public hearing at the Board of Education meeting and present that recommendation to the board and get that approval to be able to extend that time. So the first four weeks is within our authority to go ahead and to announce that we will start remote. Based upon the information and the level of COVID, we will go back, if necessary, and have it an open board meeting and make a recommendation to extend that based upon the levels of contagion within our area.
Thank you. Thank you. We do have a lot of questions, and I am gonna pivot to our Executive Chief of Operations. We have a lot of questions coming in talking about the social distancing. And I know Dr. Watson presented a lot of information about the things that we're gonna do in our classroom and some of the cleaning procedures that we're going to have, as well as some questions have come in on contact tracing. Mr. Miranda, would you mind just really talking about, like particularly in the orange, the things that we're gonna do to make sure that our campuses are safe, particularly as it relates to the classroom setups, configurations, and such, and some of our cleaning procedures and contact tracing?
Right. Thank you, Tiffany. Yes. So I was going to say, and so I'm glad you qualified that to in the orange, right? So depending on where we are with our decision meter, we'll be doing some things differently. And so with the orange, that would be, some students would be on campus, and those students will be socially-distanced as much as possible. One of the things, the good things about that is we'll have them in A and B schedules, and so they'll be able to come. And we'll only have half of our students in any given day. And so in that, we also will have our custodial staff constantly disinfecting and cleaning according to the CDC guidelines that they've been trained on and will continue to look at throughout the entire year. And so the masks, we've talked about, and many of you have asked us those questions, will be a part of that, as well as hand sanitizing stations throughout the campus that have actually already been installed.
Ms. Miranda, why I have you here? Can you also instructional technology and some of our distribution plans for instructional technology? I know a lot of parents have questions on that as well.
Right. We plan to have, you know, over twenty-two thousand Chromebooks. It'll be either out or available for students. And beginning in August, at the early part of August, we will be distributing Chromebooks to those families that need them. And I think you saw that on Dr. Watson's PowerPoint as well. And so we will have those available. There was a question about whether families need to get multiple Chromebooks or maybe one Chromebook that they can share. Certainly, if your students are able to share a Chromebook, that would be great. That would leave more Chromebooks for other students, and so we would appreciate that as well. And so we're looking for really a combination of both some bring-your-own-device and devices that we will provide. But we definitely plan to provide as many Chromebooks as possible, and we'll start doing that distribution in the early part of August.
Thank you. Also, a couple of questions have come in related to athletics. And I know we have our Director of Athletics on the line too, Willie Amendola. And I know that this is, you know, an evolving situation. But Willie, would you mind talking about some of the things that you're working on related to athletics and particularly as it relates to the operational decision meter? Is Willie on the line? I thought he was gonna be on the line.
Willie's not online, and so I can take that question to Tiffany. And so we have been mapping our decisions in the athletic arena to our decision meter. That's the district-wide decision meter. And so while we're in red, we will continue to be off-campus while we're in red. As we develop and maybe evolve into the orange or the yellow or the green, our athletics activity and participation will increase accordingly. And so first with kind of limited participation, and then as we develop down that decision meter, increased participation as we go along. For now, being that we are in red, we're still not currently actively participating in the athletics.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Miranda. We also have some questions closely related, but to UIL activities particularly. You know, we have such a strong performing and visual arts program here in the district. And I do that we know that we do have our Director of Performing and Visual Arts on the line. And Joe Clark, would you be open to talking with our families about some of the things? And Joe Clark, would you be open to talking with our families about some of the things that you guys are doing to prepare for the school year, both for the remote learning, empowered learning at home, as well as for when we're able to have students back on our campus?
Absolutely. Thank you, Tiffany. Parents, thank you so much for being here tonight. It's a joy to virtually see you. So in fine arts, we, much to what Mr. Miranda was saying too, we've also had the similar where we're preparing in the backgrounds. We wanna make sure everything's safe and ready for students. We're, we can't wait to get back with them and put them in bands and choirs. But we, we wanna make sure that we're doing it safely. So we're looking at the latest guidelines, latest research for aerosol sprays and choirs, band performances, and how to keep those safe, and that's in-person. But also at home, our directors have been working nonstop at home to write a curriculum that's just as rigorous as the in-person model. So we're very excited about it. We're ready to roll it out. And also, many of the TMEA performances, competitions, Allstate processes, UIL competitions have added a virtual component. So we're preparing to make sure that we facilitate this component for all students. So even if you're a senior that's ready to participate and compete at that highest level, you absolutely will still be able to perform and compete at those levels. So we're excited, and we're ready to get started. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Thank you. We have a couple of questions, and I know we have Dr. Lupita Hinajosa. We do have a couple of questions, four or five, from our spring early college parents. Do we know, and this might be a question for Mr. Miranda and/or Dr. Hinajosa, but that is a very special program. They're housed at Lone Star College. So we do have some families asking about, they're hearing our plan, but they wanna know the impact to spring early college and if there's any differences for that campus. Who can take that question?
Yeah, I'm gonna jump in. I was gonna jump in really quick. Ms. O'Field and yes, Lone Star is returning to school remotely. Their programs are, will also be online. However, please know they're working very closely with us, and we will align our instructional program so that if we are back on campus, we will be able to social distance. And if not, Lone Star will have plenty of instructors to ensure that all of our students can complete their work remotely and participate in the at-home learning program.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead. We are, we're coming up to the hour here. So I know that we have several cabinet members on the, on the line here in the meeting, and you've been following the Q and A. If there's any questions that I have not asked on general questions that have been repeated by several parents, if any of you would like to jump in and clarify any questions that you've either responded to individually or you just see a pattern and you'd like to go ahead and jump in and respond to some parent questions, please do so. Be glad for you to jump in and to respond to any questions that you think I may not have answered to ask the broader group.
Parents, this is Kichara Bradford. And academics, again, there were several questions just regarding electives in general, both athletics or PE or band. All electives will be provided, whether you select the in-person learning opportunity or the remote at-home learning opportunity. So we have great plans and ideas and resources for health and PE for, you know, all of our electives to be provided to students. Also, at the secondary level, if your child participates in band, there will be the opportunity for them to continue to participate in band. And we are actually talked to high schools today about them, you know, finishing their day remotely, if that's the option that you choose, and then them having the opportunity to, you know, take a transportation school, you know, the school bus to their band practice as needed. And so there is the full opportunity for our CTE programs, all of our UIL, all of our electives in both options, and more specific information will be shared as you are enrolling and registering, as well as master scheduling, schedules being shared with your students. So very similar to in years past, where they have seven courses and they have that schedule that they're seeing all of those classes each day.
Thank you. We did have a few questions, and I'm not sure who on the line will be able, but we are having some families ask about the online registration. We do have a few families online that are, their students weren't with us last year. So they're asking about registration. I know our new student registration is open. So we will be working to get you a survey out related to the two options for those families. But also just a few questions about online registration, which I know opens at the end of this month. So I don't know, Mr. Miranda, if you wanted to address online registration and the opening of that and how important it is to get that information in?
Right. You already, you mentioned that for new students, online registration is already available. And so you can find that information on our website. For returning students, our schedule is to open that on the, the end of the month. So the 27th, I believe, is the date for online registration to be open for our returning students. So you should be able to find that on our website next week.
Thank you. Dr. Watson, did you wanna have any closing remarks? I think we're close to the hour, and we're gonna go ahead and wrap up. Do you have any closing remarks for everyone on the town hall meeting? You're muted, Dr. Watson.
Okay, yes. Once again, I wanted to say a very special thank you to all of you that have provided feedback to me in a variety of ways. We hope that today you have seen the information that we've shared with you and understand that safety is a main priority, as well as ensuring that all of our students are participating and learning. We know that there will be several additional questions as the nights go on. So we strongly ask you to log onto our website. We do have frequently asked questions on a variety, regarding a variety of the models that we've shared with you tonight. But most of all, I do want you to understand that these are different times that we're in, and we're not going into it with a spirit of fear, but we're going into this wanting to make the best decisions that we have for our families. Remember what I said, that our community is only as strong as our school district, and our school district is only as strong as our community, and working together, anything is possible. Seven years ago, when I came to this district, I heard that Spring ISD was a gym. And I strongly believe that our district is a gym, and working together, we will be able to conquer COVID-19 by ensuring that all of our staff and our families have all of the needed resources to make education possible for the most important, which is our students. Once again, thank you for entrusting your children with us, and we look forward to sharing more information with you as updates continue to come. Thank you very much, and have a blessed evening.
Thank you. If any question wasn't answered, this evening, we will be updating our FAQ. So please visit the Spring ISD website and check out all our latest information. As we head to the start of the school year, we will be posting lots of updates for all of our families. Thank you again for joining us this evening, and we were very happy you were here. Thank you.
Thank you.